We'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, September the 2nd, 2025. We have four council members here. We excuse one council member who's not here with us this evening. And we welcome all of our directors and staff that have joined us, along with those of our general public, and also those remotely that have joined us this evening. We'll start our evening out with a pledge of allegiance, and we've asked Chief Brown from our police department to give us that, after which we'll have opening remarks from David Packard, our HR director.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for this day. We are grateful for this opportunity we have to live in our wonderful country, and this opportunity we have to be in Pleasant Grove City and convene together at the city council meeting. We're very grateful for our many blessings. We're grateful for all the residents in this beautiful community. We pray tonight that we might have Thy Spirit to be with us and guide us in our conversations, help us all to be enlightened together, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thanks Kelvin and David. Now move on to approval of tonight's meeting agenda, and I don't think there's any changes.
No changes, Mayor.
So I ask for a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and also a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to our open session and invite anybody to come forward and address the council this time on any issues they'd like to talk about. And I will preface, we have several public hearings this evening, and if you're here for a public hearing, please wait till that, and then that will be your turn to come forward and address the council. So we'll now open our public hearing for anybody who'd like to come up and address I see no one coming forward, so we'll now bring it back up to the council and close our public open session and move on to item number six, our consent items, which consist of our city council meetings for August the 5th, 2025 meeting, B, to consider for approval payment number three for staker parsons for the 500 East reconstruction and the 200 South to 1100 North project, and C, to consider for approval payment number 21 to Big D construction for the Cook family park project, and D, to consider approval payment number eight of SNL Incorporated for swimming pool deck project, and E, to consider for approval payment number four for Bar S Construction Company LLC for the 1520 North, 1100 North, and 1800 North roadway reconstruction and culinary water project, and F, consider for approval payment number four staker parsons for the 500 East reconstruction and 200 South to 1100 North project, and a pavement approval report for August the 21st, 2025, and August the 26th, 2025. Ask for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve tonight's consent items as read by you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen to have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We do not have any board commissioner committee appointments this evening.
Wait, we do.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, I did. Oh, I did.
Look right back. Okay, we do have one. To consider for resolution number 2025-034 of the governing body of Pleasant Grove City appointing a member representative and an alternate to the Utah County Aquifer Council Board, providing for effective date. And we'll turn time to Director Winterton. Do you want to tell us why we're doing this and updating this?
North Utah County Aquifer Council is a consortium of interested organizations who are interested in the groundwater and the study thereof in the northern part of our county. They look at opportunities to let water into the ground to recharge the aquifer, such as places up near American Fort Canyon, and also its effects on the north county as a whole. We have a representative that has been attending, Aaron Wilson, and Drew Hoffman as an alternate. And so this is to make that official in the capacity to assign them that role and duty from our city.
So you follow that council? It's Drew and Aaron that are, Drew's the alternate and Aaron is the main one on that council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Great appointments. Any other questions for Director? Thank you.
So we just approved the resolution?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-034 as read.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, a second by Councilmember Jensen, and this will be a roll call vote, and we'll start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move on to our public hearings for this evening. And we'll move on to 9A, our public hearing to consider ordinance 2025-017 for zone change to approximately 4.97 acres of land from the R1-9 to the R1-20, single-family residential zones, to the R1-10 zone located approximately 1525 East, 200 South, and applicant is Randy Smith. And we'll turn the time over to Director Cardenas.
All right, Mayor, Council, my apologies, I'm just barely made it, right? I'm running from my very intense game.
Did you win?
Zero, zero. And we're going to go to extra overtime and then penalty kicks, but I have responsibilities to do, right? More important responsibilities than a game.
So they're having a shootout right now?
Right now, yes, right now.
Thanks for being here.
Sending good vibes to them. Oh, my pleasure, right? This is my job. I love my job. And there's, I always says, from the things that matter the least, soccer is the most important, but from the things that matter the least, right? Anyway, so let me show you what we have right here. This is the east portion of our city, Mayor and Council, and we got an application from, as you said, from Randy Smith. I think he represents, or he works from Philston Homes, and this is the property of Ed Adams. And we're talking about the property that is located right here in this area, okay? So as we can see, it's in the R120 is what we call the bench, okay? And the applicant is proposing to rezone. The total area is almost 497, as the mayor said. In reality, it's about four acres, and I'll show you why. But it's proposing to rezone it from this green color that is R120. This right here is R120, meaning that each lot is 20,000, or is required to be 20,000 square feet per lot in order to be subdivided. And the applicant is proposing to rezone it from R120 to R110, okay? R110 is this yellow color right here. So we have plenty of homes right here that are in the R110 zone. So again, the applicant is proposing to go from this green one to this yellow one. And what's the difference between those two zones? Well, it's simple in the square footage and the width required per lot. Right now, right now, if the applicant wants to subdivide, the applicant will be required to do 20,000 square feet lots and lots that are at least 100 feet wide. If the applicant rezones of the R110 is permitted, then the applicant can develop lots that are 10,000 square feet lots, okay? Pretty much we're talking about two lots per acre versus four lots per acre, okay? So that's what the difference is. I got a couple of maps that I get to show you. Let's start with the zoning map again. Now we saw the colors. This is the area right here. And the reason why I say, it's 4.92 acres, the entirety of it, but this is the access to the property, which will be the, for sure will be a road. There's no way someone can put a lot right here, and there's an existing home right here already, okay? So what the, what in reality is this area right here in the back, but the total area is almost five acres. Developable area, four acres of land, okay? So that's what the applicant is proposing to develop. If we take a look at the pattern of what we have, this orange right here is R19, okay? This, I remember driving on 200 South not many years ago, and we used to see those apples and deer sometimes in that area right here. And as you can see, as this area is being developed, it's being rezoned as it's being developed. This area right here, which there were also orchards, it was rezoning to R19, so they can, they were able to do lots that were 9,000 square feet lots. And this area right here, a little portion of it, just the entrance, as we can see, just the entrance right here, is already in the R19. However, the applicant is not submitting for the R19, he's going for one zone above, and it's R110. The reason why he's going to an R110 is because our general plan, even though it's neighboring R19, our general plan says that the zones that are applicable to their area are either R110, R112, or R115, okay? So the applicant could have requested anything, however, he's trying to follow the general plan, and the general plan in this area right here, the designation for that is the single-family low-density area, okay? I have something right here of our general plan. This is the area, single-family low-density, and we can see that the property is just right here in the boundaries, okay? That's why the applicant is not going for the R19, but for the R110. So the property is right here in these boundaries. Again, the future land use designation that we established in the general plan is the single-family low-density. If we actually read what that means, it says, "Single-family residential low-density, low-density residential areas are neighborhoods characterized by single-family homes. Typically, as part of subdivisions, these areas are intended to serve as a buffer between medium-density residential and very low-rural residential areas, and should maintain densities of two to four units per acre. Applicable zones, R115, R112, and R110." Okay? So let me show an aerial, no, that's not the one. Oh, there you go. That's what I want to show you, how like, this is the developable area again. There's a home right here already, and this will be the access to the subdivision. I created this map a little bit to give us an idea. Again, the area in red, this area in red is the area that is proposed to be rezoned, eventually developed. Again, not by the city. We have an applicant, it's a completely, completely, it's a company. This is their submiddle, but I just did this map right here to show us. Everything south of 200 South is R19, so lots can be 9,000. But I took this picture right here, and I'm showing you that these lots that are in red right here are lots that are in the 10,000 square feet or a little bit more, okay? And these lots in orange are lots that are, sorry, that are less than, less than, either they're 8,000, 9,000, or 8,500. So again, this yellow, this lot right here, for example, this lot is about 9,000. It's perfectly legal, because if you remember, let's take a look at this, it's perfectly legal, there's this strip of land right here that says, hey, R19 can be applicable right there. So, but just to give an idea of the vicinity and the areas of where these lots, where this property is. Staff brought this to the planning commission, and the planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval, five to one, in favor of the rezon. Staff recommended approval as well, based on the general plan and on the vicinity and how it matches the neighboring area, okay?
Was there, on the one, was there any findings given? Why the one vote no, or was it just a no?
Not during the public hearing, no. They weren't mentioned in the public hearing. Okay. Let me see.
Is access, is the only access on 200 South?
Yeah, right now, yeah. Yeah, right now, yeah. I mean, that's what he, that's what the property owner owns, so he can give himself that access right there. Probably eventually, I, no, there's, there could be an access to right here, but that's in the future, like, right now, the property, the property owner doesn't own that land, so he cannot grant himself access from someone else's land, so that's his property right there. That's what I have, Mayor and Council. I received multiple comments. I received emails and comments about, against the rezoning of this property. I think that a lot of the neighbors are right here, and I think the property owner and the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Before we start, would we, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and, if he'd like to, and make a statement of what their probably future plans is here, and all this is just a zone change, but just so we're all aware of what kind of can come down the road here, if you would.
Good evening. I'm actually Jason Harris, not Randy Smith. Randy has a city council meeting in South Jordan today, so you get me. Great, grateful to be here, and the presentation done by your staff is fantastic. I don't want to belabor anything, but I'm here to answer any questions that you have. Is there anything that you're curious about as far as, you know, our intentions or anything like that? I'm happy to answer it.
All right, thank you. I don't have any questions.
We don't have a present.
Okay. I find that sometimes it's helpful after public comment, if their questions come up, I can be very helpful in that way, because a lot of times their questions come up for us, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council. If you would still, if you would, when you come forward, state your address, and then we'd also like you to point out where you, from your address, where you live on this map. So we invite anybody to come forward and address the council this time, and you'll have three minutes to address us.
Scott, is there a pointer up there for him?
Yes, I'm Mark Bezen, live at 1192 East, 200 South, in beautiful Pleasant Grove of Strawberry City. I'm just down the street from this area, but I know it intimately. And the reason I'm here is to support the decision of mayors and city councils for the last, and planning commissions for the last 50 years, which has kept it at this particular zone. The only reason this is being requested is because someone wants to make more homes in this area than less homes. One of the last properties that was sold in this area, sold to Mr. Parrish. Many of you know him, he has a lovely home over on Grove Creek Drive. He bought the ours property for one reason, and that's because it was rural and had access so he could have his horses and things there. But if you go farther north, what's not being talked about by the staff member is that all those lots along 1400 East are larger than an acre per home. Some of them have two and a half acres per home, and I think that's more consistent with really what's in that area up there. And when we had the hearing with the planning commission, I'm surprised I'm the only one here this evening, and maybe it's because they're discouraged, all of the people there except Ed Adams voted no, including Ed's sister-in-law, who owns an adjoining property. She wanted to keep it at the same zone. And one of my objections was, when I looked at this, came into the staff, so I had accurate information, this proposal violates the vicinity plan that's on record here in this area. And I think we were asked at that hearing with the planning commission to just give a blind yay or nay. And again, the residents there, and I'm sorry that Mr. Smith wasn't at the hearing for the planning commission, nor is he here tonight. He doesn't own the property. He's the one making the request for the zone change. Everyone in the neighborhood gave specific reasons about child safety, about runoff, about water pressure, and that, and we don't need double the homes that would normally be allowed in the zone at the present time. I could get into more specifics, but don't have time according to your clock. But anyway, that's my bottom line, is I support, what, 50 years up in that area, and I know it intimately, having worked up there and helped people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Adams, and I live, I'm the home that's there on the property, just close to that packing shed right there. Now, just north of my home is the old channel from Battle Creek. And so I've got a fence just north of my home, a wood fence, and I would roughly say that if you were to go out level for 15 feet, you'd probably drop 30 to 35, and it really drops off there. And the 4.15 acre there, the bigger rectangular chunk, that's the only piece that, again, could support any kind of housing development. Within that, there would probably be a cul-de-sac and road in that would probably take out, I'm sure probably about one acre of that, which would leave three acres. And so, you know, I was, I had one developer, Mill Haven wanted this, and I approached him after a couple of family members didn't care for it, and so he looked at it, and then he just said, he kind of backed out, and his was, he said that there was not a, he wasn't sure how to get that road up out of there and what that would take. Now, the road to 200 South, that's the only way in and out. So there's not a lot of leeway there, and I really think, even with this new situation, the most homes that could go in there would be a dozen, and I don't think you're going to get that many with what they're proposing. It's a beautiful area, it's secluded because it's off the road, and yet you've got a beautiful shot of Battle Creek Canyon and all. It's a, it's a, it's a great spot. So for homes and seclusion, whoever gets in there is going to like it. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Barker. I live literally across the street from where this is being developed. Like was said, there was probably 15, 20 people that got up at the planning commission meeting that all said no against it, and so I think everyone got a little disheartened by voicing their opinion, and then the whole committee going against what they had said and what they had brought up. So I do not feel like there's as many people here tonight. And also, what he brought up with the home sizes, E. Mark had said, he brought up like three of them that matched what he wants it to be, but if you go down that street, all of those lots are way bigger, zoned for what is more, showing what it's currently being zoned at. Some points that were brought up at the last meeting that are very valid on why this should not be done is water pressure up there is awful. There's this thing, 1500 East is right across the street from that, and I swear 1500 East is like a dividing line for everything. When there's a snowstorm, I'm like, I'm not leaving my house, it's awful out. My kids are at the high school, and they're like, there's no snow here. Like, you hit 1500, and it's just a whole different ballgame. And the water pressure up in that area, my mom was here last time, she couldn't be here this evening, she cannot flush her toilet and have somebody in the shower at the same time. There is not enough pressure. So you have all of these houses that I've already talked about, we don't have pressure for our hoses, we don't have pressure in our house, so to add in double the amount of houses to change the zoning is a huge problem, which then brings up the fire problem. You guys watch our poor mountain get lit up almost every year. Thank goodness not this year so far. But when you're pulling from those fire hydrants and from stuff up there, if you're having double the amount of houses in there, and that's a fire which is dry canyon leading down into an orchard into homes, then you're not going to be able to fight a fire as much when you have twice as many houses, plus then everybody trying to escape on the same road, because there's only one access point in and out of that. From what I understood, and I could be wrong, then the builder had a set amount of houses that they claimed that they were going to put in, which can very easily be done with what is already zoned up there. So I feel like the only reason to change the zoning is to change the amount of houses that you get in there, and so that was why it was hard to watch the planning commission okay it, because it's like, why are you okaying this if it's the way it was and it fits with what works with it? Um, crap, I'm out of time. My other point, and I just totally lost my train of thought on that. Anyways, I guess that's all. It's just not a safe bet with everybody, I mean, Quanis Park is up there, people are already flying down that road like crazy, and so more cars coming in and out, 1500 Turn is already a blind spot, and it's going to probably be another blind spot coming in and out right where that access point is also. I think that somebody on the commission had said, you can't stop change. If I could stop the entire thing from being developed, I 1,000% would. Change isn't being stopped, houses are obviously going in there, it's just the amount of houses, and how much is a city? Do you want to put more strain on that area up there because of that? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you've already had, what else did you want to add?
I'd just like to clarify, I think as far as water on the northwest corner of that property, that's where John Gage, that's where the utilities are going to come in. I believe it's on a different system there, I may be wrong, but they have a lot of water pressure over there, and they do want to.
Mayor, if I, I mean, some of what we're hearing is more site plan specific, when we're talking about roads and, you know, subdivision, how many lots, all that's going to be determined at the time that they submit a site plan, so that's just speculation at this point. I think we have an understanding that what's in front of you is just whether the rezon is something you want to consider or not.
Yeah, I believe we understand that. We also know that we, we're working on the low-pressure system, but we are at the top end of our system up there. I don't think there's a problem with the volume of water, it's just the pressure there, and our public works department's working on that as I speak, so anyways, anyone else like come forward and address? I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our open session and bring it back up here to the council for further discussion or a motion on ordinance number 2025-017.
I'll just give my little bit of two cents here. It's always hard, and I think Pleasant Grove is going to have this moving forward, a lot of it. As we see their grandma, grandpa, or mom and dad, they're going to move the property off to their kids, and whether it's one acre, two acre, five acres, 10 acres, this is going to be the new challenge for Pleasant Grove moving forward. How do we want to develop? How do we want to proceed? How are these things going to affect our infrastructure moving forward? And I'm sure, Scott, I, you know, that was one of the things brought up was water pressure, and I think we could address that at a later time, or we could have Neil get up and address it. I mean, is it compatible with the surrounding area? Is it compatible with our general plan moving forward? We just barely had our general plan meeting a few years ago, that we went through a lot of this and had citizen input, and we knew some of the challenges moving forward would be some of this infield that we have, the challenges. And, you know, I, look, I sympathize with a lot of you. I, you come to my house and look at my backyard, I mean, I lost my great view, but that's, I understand that, right? The property rights. Someone bought the land behind me and built a couple stories, but I mean, I lost my view. That's, that's fine. I understand that the rights there, and so things have to be. I understand that the rights there, and so things have to be balanced with that. My big thing is, you know, we have to have, the Planning Commission, a few of us have served on the Planning Commission, it's kind of rough, because we have bumper rails we have to stick to, they have to stick to with the code. With us, it's a little bit different, you know? We were able to take your input and concerns and listen to you and talk through these things, and so I appreciate you, those who came and spoke, I appreciate that. And so these things are not always easy for us, right? But we have to look at the general plan, property rights, and the other concerns that are brought up, so.
So I have a lot, I have a couple of, I have a lot going on in my brain, sorry, that my words, my words will come. I do have some questions about, will the, as the water is being looked at, the water pressure, is that the same system as the hydrants?
Yeah, why don't we have Neil just come up and address the water issue?
If we look at the map, this area is served mostly with the supply that comes out of Battle Creek. There is a little coronation building right here, and there's a tank right there. And during times where there's a lot of water coming down, it fills the tank, and then when there's water going out, it drops the tank. Basically, that elevation of the tank is what dictates what the water pressure is going to be. So this entire area will never, ever have more water pressure than what that tank can provide unless we build a tank up the hill somewhere higher, which I don't know that is a feasible thing for our city. We also have a tank down at Grove Creek, and those tanks work in tandem, they're the exact same elevation to service these residents. Out of that tank is a large, what we would call a distribution pipe, 16-inch line. And so when you have an elevation that is set and a large distribution line, like the mayor said, the volume isn't the problem, it's just the pressure. And so we asked our consultant engineer to look at this issue, and to quote from his report, he said, whether you have zero, 15, or 30 homes in this development, there's negligible impact to peak day or peak hour pressures. That's because there's, there's a large volume here. This is a pretty unique situation. Generally, the distribution network limits the number of homes and can affect the pressure. The homes and the pressure are mostly affected by that tank elevation. So if the tank comes down, residents probably do feel like, oh, there's a little bit less. And then when it comes back up, then you have a little bit more. And when you're already down at a, at a lower level, you feel that impact to your toilet and to your shower, because every couple of feet is one PSI. Does that answer your question related to the water?
It does. Maybe I'll ask a clarifying question. So whether this was zoned R18 or R120, the, the impact on the pressure is going to remain the same?
That's, that's a correct summary. That has to do with its proximity to the tank and the large distribution line that it is, and the elevation of the tank.
Okay.
Neil, is there anything in the future of looking to maybe, I don't want to say fix, is not the right word, but address it maybe any further or not?
To modify and increase our service area at this point would be extremely expensive. And so there might be an opportunity to replace that tank right there up, up a little bit and help a little bit, but to say we're going to go from the 40 PSI or 50 PSI that we're at up to 80 or 90 is just not going to happen without major upgrades and without a different approach to our entire zones of our city's system. That reason alone is one reason we have cautioned against ever going above and developing above the Salt Lake Aqueduct, is because that elevation of the aqueduct is higher than what we could effectively serve. And frankly, the, the pressure will be low in this area.
Is there anything the residents can do individually? I know it sounds like a tank issue, but is there anything they can do individually to increase the pressure?
Booster pumps on a private system are not allowed. And that's so that pressure doesn't overcome the entire city system and cause a backflow event and potentially bring contaminants into the system. We're required to have a certain level by state code, and these meet those levels, but those levels are not optimum or premium levels, they're minimum levels.
Okay, understood.
I'd also like to comment that they are levels at the sidewalk and curb. And so in instances where you have a home built above the sidewalk and curb, two, two and a half stories high, that top shower is going to have less pressure than at the curb, where our standards are required to be met.
Thank you, Director Winterton. So as Eric said, growth is hard, and managing our, our beautiful orchard spaces that are being now developed is very, very hard, especially for the neighbors. So as a legal decision, the general plan says that I can't demand an R120, I can't demand an R115. The property has been sold, and in the general plan, there's three options. And so the only decision that we have is to decide legally if health, safety, and welfare are at risk for the zone. And so because the site plan has not been presented, the traffic, the one road out, the amount of homes will be decided by the site plan. And so that, those decisions will come at a later time when that site plan has been submitted. So I have no health, safety, and welfare findings at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think just if I was going to add anything to that, I would, I would say that an R110 is, is actually, is, I mean, they could potentially request an R9, R19 in that area, and an R10 seems to fit the general area and definitely within the general plan.
Sit.
First, I'm sorry that you've had those water problems both inside and outside of your home. That is really, really frustrating, and I apologize for that. There's not more we can do to resolve those issues for you, because that is something that you're affected with every day, whether you're showering or outside in your yard. So I apologize, and hopefully we can get a solution to that at some point down the road. Is there, is there a compromise we can do from going, because it is a big zone change from the R120 down to the R110? Is there a compromise within there?
No, not legally.
Well, I mean, that's not what they're asking.
Not what's been requested.
So that, that's probably more of a discussion with the developer.
I'm just trying to find that middle ground that the residents could be happy with, and we're also respecting private property rights as well, that if there's something we could do.
Well, and I think that comes with the site plan and the developer conversation.
But once we approve a certain, it's not going to go up? If we approve R110, there's no discussion after that?
The terrain and access will determine that, but.
No, it's just what's before Sheriff said, so that's what we're looking at here tonight. Okay, council? Ask for a motion.
Yeah, I don't know of a, I don't know of another option.
There's not.
No. All right, so I will make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-017 for a zone change as read.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Anderson. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Councilmember Williams, and this will be a roll call vote, and we will start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, and Councilman Rogers is absent. So we'll now move on to our next public hearing this evening, which is 10B to consider for authorizing the mayor, no, excuse me, 109B, public hearing to consider ordinance 2025-018 for zone change on approximately 0.56 acres of land from A1 agricultural zone to RR rural residential zone located approximately 3195 north, 1240 west. The applicant is Hunter Smith, and we'll turn the time back over to Director Cardenas.
Mayor, council, what we have in front of us, another request for a rezone. In recent years, we annexed that property right there, this, this big square, I think it was in the last five years. Council Williams was already a part of our council, if I remember correctly, right? When we annexed that. And they, it's been undeveloped. Development creeps in, right? So now we have our first applicant, and they want to build a home right here. Now, when we annex this property, usually when we annex a property, it immediately falls into the A1 zone, meaning agricultural, agricultural one acre is what's required. So the agricultural one acre is for agricultural uses, and it's being used for agricultural uses, but now as they're trying to develop and they're trying to put the first home, it's going to go on that little square that we can see right there, and they're proposing to rezonate for A1, meaning requiring one acre per lot to RNR. RNR is rural residential, so they'll be able to build a home, and the maximum, the minimum square footage will be half an acre, the minimum acreage to build it, okay? Again, if we take a look at this area, we have in our general plan, north of 2600, and remember when we worked on this, and there was a specific request from the city council north of 2600, rural residential, agricultural, and R120. Those were the three zones. And in this case, the applicant is proposing a rural residential, half-acre lot, and we brought this also to the Planning Commission. It meets the requirements of the general plan, for sure, it meets the vicinity. I mean, everything else around is rural residential. And the Planning Commission, let me zoom in a little bit more, there we go. Yeah, it was a unanimous decision. It is going to be a new home that is going to be right here. For some reason, at this point, they're only submitting to rezonate point, 0.56 of an acre. Eventually, for sure, we're going to get an application for, for, for the rest of the area. But it looks like at this point, they only want to build one home, okay? That's what I got, Mayor and Council.
Just a question, question on my math. So acre is 42, 42,000?
Yes.
So a half acre is 22?
26.
Oh, 26?
It's 51, isn't it?
I've got it right here, oh.
If only I had Nate Bargatze when I need him.
That's why I have my best friend Google right here. There we go.
All right.
That's it. 21780.
217.
That's half an acre, yeah. 21780.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Daniel, council? Okay, thank you, Daniel.
My pleasure, Mayor.
With that, we will now open our public hearing for ordinance number 2025-018. Now invite anybody to come forward and address the council.
My name is Hunter Smith, so I'm the applicant on this. We are requesting this rezone on behalf of the family who owns the property. They'd like to build a new home there for themselves, and they've asked us to help them, since we do this for them frequently on different developments. So I just wanted to come up and clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing and bring it back up to the council for further discussion or a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for approval of ordinance 2025-18 for a zone change on approximately 0.56 acres of land from the A1 agricultural zone to the RR rural residential zone located approximately 3195 north, 1240 west.
We have a motion from Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Anderson, and we will start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move on to our next public hearing this evening, which is 9C, a public hearing to consider for ordinance 2025-019 for a zone change for approximately 1.19 acres of land from, from A1 agricultural zone to the RR, no, excuse me, public hearing to consider ordinance 2025-019 for zone change approximately 2.19 acres of land from R120 single-family residential zone to the R1-12 zone located approximately 644 north, Homestead Circle. An applicant is Ben Kajar, and we'll turn the time back over to Director Cardenas.
Mayor, council, we have an applicant, and Ben Care, I've been practicing his last name, Ben Care, right? So Ben Care, he's proposing to do a rezonate, as the mayor just mentioned, of 2.19 acres. Let me show you, let me do a diving into his property. This is the area, this is the zoning map, and this is the area that is being proposed to be rezoned. And now, if we look into this sepia, sepia color, kind of like yellow, which brown is right there, this is the R112 zone, okay? The property that he's proposed to rezonate is also an R120, like the one that we just talked two items ago, is this green one, okay? I'm going to eliminate this so we can actually take a look at it. There we go. You can see this area right here is the area that is proposed to be rezoned. And I'm going to go right here, and we can see that acreage. Now, Ben Care owns two lots, this lot right here already in the R112, and he owns this lot right here too, okay? Actually, he proposed, he's proposing eventually to build a home right here, his, his personal residence, and now he's proposing, I think he's in contract, or he knows that better, he can tell you guys, but to acquire this property and to rezonate. As we can see, it is contiguous to the R112. The general plan is, is also in the same designation, it's in the single-family residential. To go for an R110 will be a little more complicated, because it's not adjacent to an R110, even though R110 is right here, but the R112 is contiguous. I think he, he's looking at that, he talked to staff in the front counter, I think I helped him out a couple times as well, and then he decided to go for that zone, because again, it's contiguous, so he's, he won't have a spot zoning right there. So we brought this item to the Planning Commission as well, and it received a unanimous recommendation of approval to rezonate 2.19 acres, okay? Again, it's going from this green color, which is the R120, which requires 20,000 square feet lot, to 12,000 square feet lot, single-family residential, one home per lot. That's what I have, Mayor and Council.
Any questions for Daniel? No, thank you, Daniel.
My pleasure, Mayor.
With that, we'll now open our public hearing for ordinance number 2025-019.
Mayor, the applicant is here, if we want to, before you have the, or part of the public hearing, he can come and speak.
It's Ben here, would you come forward and probably speak on your behalf?
Thank you. Thanks for letting me come forward. Thanks for saying my last name, right? I appreciate that, Adonis. Yeah, and we do own all the land now, so it's good. It's kind of interesting, we were combining those lots, and there was like four feet that was like up in the air of who knows who owned it. And so I went to the city, and they're like, hey, by the way, you have to go to your neighbor. And it just so happens that the neighbor wanted to sell, and it came to the point that we were fortunate enough to be able to purchase. So the opportunity that we're looking to do is, I am now able to extend my property, I'm going to keep a little over two acres, and and develop a couple lots down below on 1350. And that's what we're looking to do. Pretty simple. It should match all the other properties right next to us. Part of my property already is R112. And yeah, we're excited to do that and work forward with these guys to be able to, to make it happen. So, any questions for me?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we'll now open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council this time. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing and bring it back up here to the council for further discussion or a motion on ordinance 2025-019.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-019 for the zone change, as read.
We have a motion from Councilmember Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Jensen. And we will start out with Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now move on to our next public hearing this evening, which is 9D. Public hearing to consider ordinance 2025-020 for a zone change for approximately 1.15 acres of land from the R120 single-family residential zone to the R110 zone located approximately 555 east, 1100 north. Applicant is Russell Jacobson. And we'll turn time back over to Director Cardenas.
Pretty sure we're all gonna dream about R120s tonight. This is also a property in the R120. The property is an acre and fifteen, meaning that if it has to be developed right now, probably the applicant can have two lots. And the applicant is proposing to rezonate to an R110 to be able to develop three to four lots eventually, okay? The property is that long rectangle that we can see right there. And we have some remnants on R120 in the area. So we have some right here, and we have a couple right here. As we can see, those are the old parcels where people used to go and put their crops and stuff like that, and then come back to their homes and so on. And we have a lot of those. When we see a narrow, long lot, it's one of those old lots even designed by, I was gonna say, old people of age, but I don't wanna offend nobody in the room, so.
That's a good idea, Daniel.
By my, by my parents, even beyond that. Anyway, so if we take a look at that property, okay? The applicant is proposing again to go to the R110. Very common, and just probably in the last ten, fifteen years, this area right here used to be R120 as well. These homes are kind of new, okay? So, meaning that they had to be developed, sorry, rezoned first to R120, then developed. And the applicant is proposing to do something similar. Again, it's 1.12 acres. The access is, is complicated as well. The applicant's gonna have to maneuver some stuff right there, but we'll see that at the time of the subdivision plat, subdivision plat. But what he's presenting right here is to reduce the required, required square footage of the lots from 20,000 to 10,000. What does that mean? Let me try it again. So, that's what the applicant is proposing. Yes. Yes, this is 1100.
1100 and, okay, north.
And, and 500 east.
500 east.
Yeah, I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. We can take a look at it right here.
That'd be great. You're just up from Grove Crest Elementary.
Wait, so is this old Atwood property?
I don't know the name of it.
Yeah.
What's that?
He's just north. He's where the, kind of below the R115, right there.
Yeah, if we zoom out, we'll, let's do it just so we can locate ourselves. We can see how eventually R110 is, like, every time somebody develops, they go into the R110 right here, so, yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's gonna zoom out right here.
In front of the, in front of the junior high. Nope, the other way.
Right here. First, this is right here.
Right there.
Right there.
Yeah. I need to zoom out, it's always fine for, so this. I don't know where that is.
It's just right above.
Follow that street right all the way up.
Right here.
So it's just down off.
How about we think about Grave Cross School? There you go. Grove Crest School. East of Grove Crest.
Melendez property there.
Yeah, we can see the trail right there.
But on this one as well, the access is going to be on 1100?
That, that one, I think, I don't know if the applicant is here. He's still trying to figure out. I think he's working on a plat at this point. He actually presented something to his staff. Someone mentioned earlier the vicinity plan. The vicinity plan, we will follow the vicinity plan at the time of a subdivision. So when he submits, we have a vicinity plan for the area. We're trying to follow the vicinity plan. And if they don't meet it, they need to present something to city council as well in the future. I think a couple lots may have access from there, but I don't, I don't know if the four lots will have access from there at this point, okay? That's what I have, Mayor and Council. Planning commission also forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval for this item.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Daniel? Thank you, Daniel.
My pleasure, Mayor.
We'll now open our public hearing for ordinance number 2025-020. Inviting everybody to come forward and address the council this time. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing and bring it back up to the council for further discussion or a motion.
I made the motion that we adopt ordinance 2025-020 for a zone change on approximately 1.5 acres of land from the R120 single-family residential zone to the R110 zone located approximately 555 east, 1100 north.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lamone. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Anderson. And we will start out on a roll call vote with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move on to our next public hearing this evening, which is a public hearing to consider ordinance 2025-021 for a code text amendment to amend section 10-12A-2-C permitted conditional and accessory uses in the business and manufacturing park, BMP zone, to add to use number 2185 dash bottling and canning soft drinks, carbonated waters, non-alcoholic drinking, including drink powders and concentrates to list of permitted uses within the BMP zone. Applicant is Jacob Busby, and the presenter is Director Cardenas.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, now let's locate ourselves. This is where Neil lives.
This is where Neil lives?
Yes, he lives pretty much.
Neil's house?
That's Neil's house. And this is Sunlight Lane. Now, if we go and travel west, we're gonna, so he lives in the manufacturing zone, lock him. If we travel west, we go into a zone that is kind of like a buffer between the manufacturing zone and the Grove. Is the BMP zone, or also known as the Business Manufacturing Park. It's a, a little less intense than the manufacturing zone. That green zone allows for manufacturing, but lighter manufacturing, that's what happens right here. And what the applicant is proposing is to add to the list of permitted use, use 2185. Use 2185 is the use that allows for the manufacturing of carbonated drinks, sodas, the canning of it, with the exception of alcoholic beverages. Those are different. That's a different use. So again, what the applicant is proposing, as we know, right here in this area, all of this is developed. All of this is developed. I have a very old map as the background, but all of that is development. It's developed with a lot of flex space, what we call flex space buildings. And one of the tenants of, of that area wants to bring a soda manufacturing to our city, and he's renting one of those areas. And, but the use is not permitted. So usually what happens, and this is a process that I'm very familiar with, but it's a great opportunity for me to share this with you, my city council and, and, and mayor. When we have zones, and we have specific uses per zone, usually when somebody comes to our front counter with a business license, and they say, hey, this is what we want to do, my land use, my city planner, which is the office land use authority, takes a look at the application, and he goes like, goes to the list of permitted uses, conditional uses, and in some cases, unwanted uses in the zone, and see, he looks for it. If it's right there, then he makes an administrative decision. And he goes, yeah, it's right here, it's listed in the code, we're good to go. If the use is not permitted in the zone, and it's not permitted because it's not included in the list of permitted uses or conditional uses, then we tell the applicant what the process is. Then stops being an administrative decision, it becomes a legislative decision when it's up to the city council, which you guys are the final land use authority of, of the city, to decide whether that use is permitted or not permitted in the zone. Usually that process takes a little longer than, than, between four to six weeks. And the reason why is because being a legislative decision, it needs to be noticed. As like a rezon, it needs to be noticed, like, let me see, what else a legislative decision? A rezon, or a general plan amendment, something like that. That's the case of this applicant. We try to do it as fast as we can, and we try to run as fast as we can, but because of the noticing, and it has to go through planning commission, then to city council, then there's some time right there. Usually what we tell applicants that actually own large buildings, and it's the case with St. John's Properties, when we talk to them, we have meetings with them, and say, why don't you go take a look at how many uses you're actually gonna, you, you anticipated that you may have, and bring them in bulk, instead of just one by one.
That's not how they work, Daniel. You know that. They can't even think that way.
We, we, that's how I dream about things to happen. But in some cases, we've been able to work it out like that. But it takes some time. In this case, that, this is the process, the legislative process. We brought this item to the planning commission. The planning commission looks at the, at the uses already permitted in the zone, takes a look at the list, and in this case, they say, yeah, it looks like it's a use compatible with the zone. So they also forwarded a unanimous recommendation of approval. Meaning that now everybody that is within this green zone, the BMP zone, if they submit an application for a soda cannery, or, or like a soda manufacturing, it will be permitted if the decision is yet from the city council, okay? So again, the recommendation was, was unanimous. Our staff considers that that's a use perfectly for the zone, and also for a recommendation of approval. That's what I have, Mayor and Council.
Any questions for Daniel?
My understanding is for Pepsi. Is that correct?
Coke all the way.
Oh, come on.
Well, you know what? One week without drinking Coke, so we're trying, we're trying.
Have they, have they named their bottling? Not that it has to have anything to do with their approvals, but have they, have they said what they're gonna manufacture?
Usually, I'm pretty sure at the business license, it says right there, it's a, it's a small company. It's not a big company, it's a small company. I don't have the name with me at this point.
Well, I had a, I had a, a drink that was made in Pleasant Grove up at Sundance. Is that it?
I don't, I don't think so. There's one already.
I cannot wait to hear from them.
Yeah, that'll, me too.
That must have been from the distillery. You just forgot about it.
You never know with Ms. Anderson.
Anyway, that's what I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Daniel. Jacob, there's a applicant here. Would you like to come up and enlighten the council here on what this venture is here a little bit, what you can?
I can't believe you don't want an R110.
Yes, I'm Jacob Busby. I work at Keystone Copac Manufacturing. We're a contract manufacturer. I mean, we don't have our own product. We do it for other customers. It's a family company, so me being part of the family, I work for them as a process engineer. So I've been working on designing the bottling line and all that. Some of our most recognizable clients would be like Justin Ingredients, if you know them.
Yeah.
So we're traditionally a powder manufacturer. Just like Justin Ingredients, we, we make their protein powders and electrolytes and nutritional products that contain powder like pills and capsules. So yeah, we wanna expand our business, make it a little more sound against market fluctuations by adding liquids into our line. And this is a canning line. It could do soda, it can, but we usually manufacture health products. So we're gonna be doing clear proteins, electrolytes, functional beverages like that. We're excited to do that. We have about 200 employees right now, and we just keep on growing, and we're excited to be in Pleasant Grove. We just came in January from Linden, and we love it here, so.
Well done. Thank you.
We'd like it when companies in Pleasant Grove grow.
Yeah.
Good work.
It's a good product.
Yeah.
It's not that, it's not that bad stuff. Councilmember Jensen, that Pepsi stuff that we consume too much of.
I think so. I do use their product, though. It's good.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Thank you. With that, we'll open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council this time. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing, bring it back up to the council for further discussion or a motion on ordinance number 2025-021. Council?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-200021 for code text amendment to amend section 10-12A-2-C permitted conditional and accessory uses in the business and manufacturing park or BPM zone to add use 2185 bottling and canning soft drinks and carbonated waters, non-alcoholic, including drink powders and concentrates to the list of permitted uses within the BMP zone.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams, a second by Councilmember Lamone. And we will start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move on to our last and final public hearing this evening, which is a public hearing to consider for ordinance 2025-022 for a code text amendment to amend section 10-15-48, mobile food trucks. This proposed text amendment would permit mobile food business to operate within public parks as long as public food, public park permit is approved and certain conditions are met, such as location requirements, trash removal, permitted hours, and advertising. Turn time back over to Director Cardenas.
Thank you, Mayor. Changing my resume after tonight, as a presenter of six items one time in a meeting. One time, one time. I haven't, I haven't dared to turn on my phone, because I'm focusing on what I'm doing right now, but we'll check later. The item that I have in front of you, Mayor Council, is a code text amendment. I remember one of my first code text amendments for the city of Pleasant Grove nine years ago. It was when I drafted an ordinance for, for food trucks. I don't know if you guys remember that, for food trucks. And it was, we create this order for food trucks, but we didn't anticipate around that time what we were gonna do when food trucks want to go to our public parks. So this time, we have an ordinance that addressed that issue. These ordinance that I have in front of you guys is, are some guidelines and regulations regarding food trucks on public parks, okay? In the past, I, I remember I drafted something that said that the one that we're supposed to give the permits was the, around that time, it was the Parks and Recreation Director. We changed that now. The one that is in charge of allowing those permits is the city administrator or designee. So we pass it from Deon to Scott. Now, we have code that is very specific of what's gonna, what's gonna happen, or how we're gonna allow a food truck to be in the park. Well, they have to apply for a permit now, okay? They have to apply for a permit. And in that permit, we're gonna decide which park is gonna be, or what, which parks they're gonna be. We're gonna decide which parking stalls they're gonna occupy. We're gonna delineate exactly what parking stalls they're gonna use, and what days of the week they're gonna use, okay? These orders also address the cleanup, they cannot park on the grass. It's very specific, but just to what a food truck can and cannot do within or parks. For example, also talks about that they cannot be parked within a public park at any time other than during regular park hours. And it's very important now that they submit for a permit. We'll, we'll, we'll be the ones managing the permit. But again, the responsibility goes from Parks Director to now the city administrator or designee.
Question?
Yes.
How does this fall under, like, city events, or like, let's choose Viking Day that's coming up? Does, if they bring in food trucks, does the food trucks now have to go around and get the said permit? Or do they fall under the event itself?
No, so, ah, that's a good question. I'm assuming if they're part, if they're in a public park, they will need to get a I'm assuming if they're part, if they're in a public park, they will need to get a permit.
Viking Day is gonna happen right here in our park.
Yeah, our intention is that there's still the, the special event permit in which people can bring food trucks to their special event, even if it's at a city park.
So they don't have to go do this special?
The intention of this was if somebody wanted to come to Cook Family Park
Sure.
on a given Saturday or on a given whatever day of the week and just show up to sell their food, not part of a special event, that's the intention of this language.
I would say inside of a park, in this case of here downtown, that's outside, that's the, that's the parking on the, on, on Main Street, that's outside of the parking, the park limits in this case, okay?
Any other questions for Daniel? Thank you, Daniel.
My pleasure, mayor.
With that, we'll now open our, our last public hearing this evening and invite anybody to come forward and address the council this time.
Well, sorry, mayor, just credit where credit is due. I think Sierra is the one that helped us draft a lot of these ordinance, so thank you for, for the help, Sierra, I appreciate it. Sorry about that.
I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing and bring it back up to the council for further discussion or a motion on ordinance number 2025-022.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for approval of ordinance 2025-22 for a COTEX amendment to amend section 10-15-48 mobile food trucks. This proposed text amendment would permit mobile food businesses to operate within public parks as long as food truck, public park permit is approved and certain conditions are met, such as location requirements, trash removal, permitted hours, and advertising.
We have a motion by council member Jensen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Anderson. And we'll go the other direction this time, and we'll start out with council member Williams.
Yes.
Council member Lamone.
Yes.
Council member Jensen.
Yes.
Council member Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. And it makes our items for, action items ready for vote, look really small this evening after that amount of public hearings, but thank you for your getting through those. We'll now move to 10A, consider for resolution number 2025-035 authorizing the mayor to declare two 2003 Honda four-track Foreman ES TRS 450 FE vehicles as surplus and direct that they be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of surplus property and providing for effective date. And we'll turn the time over to our fire chief.
I can't wait to find out what that is.
There are just a couple four-wheelers we've had.
Oh.
That's all it is.
They got, they got new ones.
All that work for just a couple 450 Honda four-wheelers. Yeah, so it's, we're just kinda cleaning house. We've had these four-wheelers. I think we, a lot of these departments got these back in 2003, 2002 for the Olympics, if I remember. I can, Orem got the same set, Provo, all these bunch of departments in the county had the same exact set. We got that new four, our new side-by-side this last year. And so really, we just don't need these four-wheelers. That would just give it, you know, kind of a clean house a little bit and surplus them. So that's kind of our plan.
Okay.
Any questions, council? Not asked for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-035 authorizing the mayor to declare two 2003 Honda four-track Foreman ES TRS 450 FE vehicles as surplus and direct that they disposed of according to city's policy for disposing of surplus property and providing for an effective date.
We have a motion by council member Williams, do I have a second? Second by council member Lamone. And we will go with council member Anderson.
Yes.
Council member Jensen.
Yes.
Council member Lamone.
Yes.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Now move on to 10B, consider for authorizing the mayor to sign the Kensington Fine Dining PG LLC DB Doing Business as Magalbees request for local authority consent for retail alcohol license. And turn the time over to our city administrator.
Since Tina's in the Mediterranean right now, I get to be the one that presents on this, but this is, this is a good addition to our community. They are requesting a consent from our local authority, which is us, for a retail alcohol license to serve alcohol at a future Magalbees restaurant. The location of this is, you know where Summit Pizza is and the Holiday Oil in that development there is where this restaurant's gonna be going in. So this is, they're requesting, Tina's looked through it, it meets all the requirements.
And Scott, this would be like the one in Linden, or?
No, this is ours. This is, you know where, across from Summit.
But will it be like the Magalbees?
Yes.
It's the.
Oh, no, no.
It's the restaurant.
It's not like that.
It's more of a.
It's the one like in Springville.
In Springville.
It's the Springville.
More of a fine, stop by dining.
That's our understanding. It's not the, it's not Magalbees Fresh.
It's not Magalbees Fresh, which is a different owner. It's the Magalbees Restaurant.
So it's Magalbees actual restaurant?
Yes.
Like what used to be in.
So if it's by Summit though, that's still like.
It's across the, there's two buildings there, there's Summit and there's another restaurant going in there.
It's just right next to Tost.
It's part of Tost.
Tost and a piano place and.
Okay, so in that strip mall of Tost.
Yes.
Yeah, right next to Tost. I remember probably a couple months ago, council Williams called me and said, hey, I have some good news. Immediately talked to the person who was bringing the restaurant, and it's similar to the one in Springville. We have to work something with the parking. We, we, we worked something out, there's plenty of parking, they'll be, they'll be fine. It will be a fantastic addition to the city right there. So it's just on the same building as Tost.
Well, we got, I did, yeah, we got, I got them in.
That's awesome.
Along with First Watch.
Along with First Watch. First Watch will open here, what, in the next month, Daniel?
Soon, yeah.
Yeah.
That's awesome, so more like the one in Springville.
Oh, I am so.
That's awesome.
We like their, we like their tax, tax money. That's why we build economic development.
I do like their role.
Oh.
And so, Daniel, Daniel, really quick, is there, with the Magalbees, have they pulled a site plan or anything yet or done?
They don't need a site plan, it's an existing building.
Oh, just, oh, that's right. But have they pulled any permits or to get going, like, we're, we're moving?
Yeah, we're moving, we're moving.
They own, they own the property.
Okay.
We're actually, it was important to work with the parking. That was, that was a good one.
That's the main issue, okay.
Yes, it was one.
Do you have an estimated date of opening?
Not yet, but in the next meeting, or I'll investigate and I will let you guys, all of you guys know about it.
Interesting that they would apply for this without a site plan and.
They don't need a site plan, because it's an existing building.
But occupancy and stuff or.
That's, that's at the time of the business license, so they're working on the business license already.
So they need this for the business.
This is part of the business license.
Got it.
If they get denied, they're likely not.
Yeah, okay.
They don't wanna get too far into the council.
Okay.
Okay, you guys just got sidetracked a little bit on a nice restaurant here.
We got all excited, mayor.
This is beyond nice.
I don't think we've had a vote on this yet.
This is tax revenue, mayor.
I need a motion, please.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by council member Williams, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Jensen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Our last one this evening is to consider for adoption of resolution 2025-036 authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between Pleasant Grove City, Utah County Department of Health and communities that care for substance misuse prevention and providing for an effective date.
This is what we call the PG Cares program, Communities That Care. We started this program just a few years back. Initially, Tamara Oborn was the one that ran that program for the city, and now it's Nicole Coontam, if you're familiar with PG Cares. It is in conjunction with the Utah County Health Department. They provide $25,000 in grant funds. The city's required to match $10,000 of that, which we have in our current budget. This is just a renewal of something we've been doing for a few years. That 25,000 split up in two ways. Half of it can be used for personnel, the other half is for training and things outside of people, personnel. So, are there any questions? Great program, Nicole does an awesome job.
Yes, yes.
We're happy with it.
Okay, thank you. Ask for a motion on resolution number 2025-036.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-36 authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between Pleasant Grove City, Utah County Department of Health and communities that care for substance misuse prevention and providing for an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Jensen, a second by council member Lamone. And we will start out with council member Anderson.
Yes.
Council member Jensen.
Yes.
Council member Lamone.
Yes.
Council member Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. That concludes all of our action items for vote this evening. And we don't have anything left from our work session, and we'll have a quick review from our city administrator on our September 16th, 2025 city council meeting. You know what, do we know anything that's happening?
Right now, we just have an additional work session item. Other than that, we don't have anything on the agenda, but I'm sure we'll have a couple items once we get closer. Well, I don't know. Daniel, are any R110s coming out?
No, we're gonna go to R112s. Okay, with that, council, let's start down here with council member Anderson.
No.
Council member Jensen.
It's good to be back.
It's good to have you back. We're glad you didn't become one of the tree huggers in the lovely state of Oregon, but anyway, thank you.
Before we go down, I do have something very important to say. The chamber put on an amazing pickleball tournament. It was a lot of fun. I did medal, my daughter medaled, it was a lot of fun.
Sidney, Sidney medaled, she took first, so proud.
I'm surprised that we're not wearing our belt buckles.
I am disappointed, but that's okay.
I know. Next time.
It was hot, it was very hot.
It was 100 degrees.
Anyway, so mayor, it was a good time traveling. I get to see a lot of cities. It was a privilege to finally take my mom, who's never really been on a vacation, and to see her enjoy and relax the backseat there and see a lot of Highway 1 and Highway 101, it was good.
One thing about the Coast Highway in Oregon is you kind of step back in time a little bit.
Oh my gosh, yes you do.
Yep.
In the way things are run.
Love it up there, so, anyway, so. And hey, I feel like I had a medal too, so, but anyway, and I, and I was home. But anyway, but thank you guys for putting on a good tournament.
Scott, Scott almost medaled, but he lost to someone up here on the podium, so it's okay.
Obviously to a better team.
Did I, did I beat Scott?
You did.
Did you forget already, say?
No, I just wanted to hear.
She was, she was rubbing it, is what she, yeah.
I've been emotionally spent ever since that match.
You've, you've beaten me enough, it was my turn.
Council member Lamone, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, just reminder of the Heritage Festival this Monday, 5 to 8, correct, Denise? Downtown Park area, it's gonna be awesome. We're celebrating 175 years. And it's free. Are you gonna have food trucks or anything?
There will be food.
Okay. Just free activities, it'll be awesome. That's a fun event every September. Not to get too specific, but it was a silver and women's and then mixed gold six-in-one on the day, so.
And, and your belt buckle, you could have wore it tonight.
I'm gonna wear it next time, so I appreciate you.
To Heritage Days.
To Heritage Days, yes, thank you. No, that was a dang good tournament Eric, that the chamber put on, very well-run.
Very well-run.
Yeah, great, great medals. That's the most important.
Sure, well, sorry, what, what day is the Heritage Festival?
Monday.
So a week from yesterday.
Mm-hmm, coming up.
And there's a melodrama, as I understand. Is that correct?
You're talking about Tina, Tina.
That's correct. And that's why the mayor's left town. I was, I was supposed to be the star. I was supposed to be the star.
And I'm working on my, I'm working on my accent.
Okay.
So if you'll tell, give that, go back to Tina and we're all in.
I can help you with that.
It's not that type of an accent.
Todd, not to say that I think I am Princess Di.
As well you should be. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, council.